For the December 8th, 2016, Village Board Meeting. Trusty Eftalo, I appreciate it. The meeting is in place.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will open up the public portion of the meeting. If you would like to confer this evening, please step up to the public area.
Good evening. Richard Walder, 20 Elm Street. I had two things tonight, but Mr. Swinney just answered your one question on the Monroe County Water Authority's hole in the sidewalk in front of my house, and he's trying to be taking care of that as soon as we can. The other thing I wanted to bring up is I heard a recent meeting that you plan to pay for the cell tower out of reserves. I think this is unfair to taxpayers to take away the reserves. If we have too much of reserves, those reserves should be used to be lower taxes or something like that. The cell tower is a revenue-producing item, and what will be, as the water towers are now producing revenue, as a cell tower is, this new cell tower won't be producing revenue. And I think the, should be, do a ban for that and pay for the ban out of cell tower revenues so the revenues are going there. The reason I think this is your previous comments and the way you seem to be going is you are working towards doing away with the village, and I think it should be paid off rather than passed on to taxpayers even after the village is gone, like we are now paying for a water tower that we no longer have the use of and still paying for a water tower where we no longer have the use of, but the county has the use of, yet we're still paying off the debt on that. So the debt for this cell tower should not go with the taxpayers, it should go with the revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I do hope all you had a great Thanksgiving. I also hope you had an opportunity to attend a white Christmas festival on Saturday. I gotta say that I've been involved in it for quite a while, one of the best I have ever seen, and I am hoping you will join me in recognizing the work of the Business Improvement District because they've done an awesome job this year. I know you actually put your column, and you were absolutely done on right by what you said there. I just have a quick observation tonight. I was listening to Bob Lonsberry about a week ago, and the mayor of Massenden called in. During the call, he mentioned that petitions have been created and are being passed in the village of Webster to dissolve the village. Now, the mayor of Massenden is Bill Murray, and he was elected promising to dissolve the village of Massenden, and he has done exactly that. So I was curious if there were petitions being circulated in our village, and I've not been able to verify the story except for a few people who said they were somewhat unhappy with the sewer tax and that they had thought of passing petitions because of that, but they still aren't. As it turns out, though, the law does favor the petitions being passed now because, given a certain timeframe, the question can be put on the ballot at the same time that June election occurs. So I'm just wondering if any of you have heard about this, and I would assume with a bunch of years to the ground, someone would know something. I attended several seminars that dealt with the finer nuances of dissolution, and it ends up ensnaring village employees, especially the village clerk, the board, all kinds of external agencies, and the residents. And regardless of the opinions on dissolution, the village should be prepared. With such a public pronouncement on the radio, perhaps you can maybe create some basic plan that you can develop just to respond in case petitions are passed. Thank you.
So to that issue, Mr. Walder, I happened to be listening that day also.
Oh, okay.
I did communicate with the mayor of Massenden. The mayor of Massenden, the vote had already gone through to dissolve Massenden. He was elected to steer them through that process. And ironically, a good friend of mine lives a street over from him and knows him very well, so I did have contact with the mayor of Massenden regarding this issue. And approximately a year and a half to two years ago, someone from the village had sent him an email asking him to provide details with respect to the process itself. So there's some emails go back and forth. And then approximately about a month ago, he told me he'd received an email, doesn't remember who it was, from a different person stating that they did, in fact, have to require signatures for the petition to be presented, and it would be presented, it was going to be presented shortly, okay, which is what he said on the radio.
Wow.
Again, he didn't know who the person was, couldn't re, after he does, he said he couldn't recall who the person was. To your, to your point that you're making with respect to being prepared, and I've had this discussion with a number of mayors throughout the county, and the way this legislation was put forth, in my opinion, was kind of backwards, okay? Because if you even bring up the subject of having a study done to see the impact of, to the voters of a village to be dissolved, it's like taboo, you don't even want to bring it up. But in certain circumstances, it, the impact on the taxpayers in reality could be very negative. Essentially, it could be more expensive to dissolve in certain circumstances, other than, you know, like Seneca Falls, and every, every community is different, okay? But the thing that kind of bothers me, and I asked in a mayor's meeting, I said, who in this room would put forward to their board the idea or suggestion to have a study done to see what would the implications would be to have your village dissolved? Not one hand went up, not one, okay? And so therein lies the rub, okay? It's to bar the standard to present to the village clerk, a petition is so low, it's ridiculous. So you're gonna, you're gonna have the vote, and people are gonna take one side and the other side, but there's no definitive proof with respect to what the cost and the impact will be on the residents. And that's the way Albany wants it. They want it that way because they want these municipalities to dissolve, in my opinion, so that downstate they'll have more control, all right? They want to take away the local control, which is, everybody, I think, would agree that it's not a good idea, okay? But for example, you know, you're looking at a sewer district, you're looking at a water district, or not a water district, you're looking at lighting district, plumbing, the whole nine yards, okay? So essentially, you know, I don't know this, nobody in this room knows this, whether it be more expensive or less expensive, but, you know, that's, 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 it was another example of very poor legislation coming from Albany, in my, in my opinion, in an opinion of a lot of people, but that's the only information I have. I immediately, I had to pull over to the side of the road, and I was, I called my buddy Terry, I said, you gotta give me, you know, his owner. He says, well, I'll tell you what, I can't give it to you without his permission, but we text back and forth, like, on Thanksgiving. And that's all the information I have. And I have, I've spoken to probably eight to 10 people that have been living in this village for many, many years, several of them are business owners, and actually, a couple of them, two years ago, mentioned, maybe we should think about dissolving the village, okay? And I'm like, okay, if there's anybody that know anything about this, it'll be, you know, these few people. And I called every single one of them the day after Thanksgiving. Not one of them has heard a word, nobody knows. You know, I texted Jake about the whole, and I know he's, he's talked to people, nobody knows where this is coming from. You know, some people have speculated, well, maybe it's, you know, it's originating in the town. Well, that's impossible because it comes, in order to have the signatures on the petition to be valid, it has to be the village electorate. Nobody from the town will have a valid signature on it.
Correct.
Okay? That's just the way it is.
But they would study, and they could get the signatures from the village. I know, I, I talk to a lot of people. There isn't anybody that I talk to that knows anything about it.
Right.
So I don't know where it's coming from.
That's where we are. It's a long-winded answer to your question, but that's what I know right now.
It's an important question.
Yeah, very.
But that's where we are. Anyone else this evening? Okay. I'll close down the public portion, we'll move right into Village Board business, and the first thing we have up is a resolution to approve the minutes of the Village Board Meeting of November 10. All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, except the Village Board Meeting Minutes of November 10.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Richard Cassidy.
All right. Next, we have the Village Board Meeting Minutes for November 22nd. Questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, except the minutes is drafted by Jake for the meeting minutes of November 22nd.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Mayor Cato.
Aye.
Richard Cassidy.
All right. Next, we have is claims and warrants.
I review the bills as I can, I don't have any questions.
I just have two. Ultra rental and supply.
What page is it?
I don't know what page it's on, I just want to move those as notes. It's for air plugs, two boxes of 200.
Oh, yeah.
I think they got coded properly because it's got coded to janitorial supplies. Is there a lot of noise in bathrooms or something?
Sometimes there is.
After the chili at the wall.
Well, safety first, Jake.
I'll make that notation and make sure that it's quoted properly.
All right. The only, the second thing I had was under DPW, the $375.16 for precision concrete cutting at Gordon Park.
Yes.
Because I know we have a, we own, we have our own saw cutter, so I was wondering.
This was a granny mower, it's a horizontal cutter, the sidewalk is lifted.
Oh, that's right. Okay, yeah, gotcha.
You have to remove a third patcher.
Okay.
Some other area there.
All right. That's all I had.
Yeah, I was just looking at the expenses for LNT, and they were pretty big.
Yeah, that's for the, you talked about that at the workshop, remember?
Mostly for hardware for the backup.
Right, exactly. Anybody else? All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, to approve the claims and warrants.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Mayor Cato.
Aye.
Richard Cassidy.
All right. Next, we have authorization for Christina Oweezak, our treasurer, to fund the employee health savings accounts for 2017. Comments, input, questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, to fund the employee health savings accounts for 2017.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Mayor Cato.
Aye.
Richard Cassidy.
All right. Next, we have authorization for Christina Oweezak, our treasurer, to fund the employee health savings accounts for 2017. Comments, input, questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, to approve the claims and warrants.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Mayor Cato.
Aye.
Richard Cassidy.
All right. Next, we have authorization for Christina Oweezak, our treasurer, to fund the employee health savings accounts for 2017. Comments, input, questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, to fund the employee health savings accounts for 2017.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Mayor Cato.
Aye.
Richard Cassidy.
All right. Next, we have authorization for Mayor Cato to sign the CBPG agreement for Kittleberger Park Sidewalk Replacement Project. Do you want to summarize this, or do you want to go page by page and read it?
Well, the resolution is only one page.
Yeah, you don't need to.
You don't have to read the contract. It's the standard contract that you've seen before for community development.
Right.
Block grants.
I think he was just kidding.
That was.
Okay. We're good. So at a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village Webster, Monroe County, New York, held at the Village Office 28 West Main Street, Webster, New York, on December 8th, present were Mayor Cato, Trusty Lansing, Trusty Duncan, Trusty Byers, Trusty Eftalo. Resolution of the Village Webster Board of Trustees authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with County Monroe for the implementation of the Community Development Block Grant Project for the Kittleberger Park Sidewalk Replacement, whereas the village made application to County Monroe, Community Development Administration, under the Community Development Block Grant Program for the Kittleberger Sidewalk Replacement Project, herein referred to as "the project." Whereas, the Monroe County Development Administration has approved said project for implementation, and whereas the village desires to enter into an agreement with the county that provides for the implementation of the project. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor for his designated need to execute a contract with County Monroe for the implementation of the project substantially in the form of that attached. So if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion, second, to approve the resolution for the execution.
For reimbursement of the 64,500? Yes. Yeah, they're reimbursable expenses, they come before we spend it, but, right, that spent for the sidewalk replacement on Kittleberger Park, we get a $64,000 back.
All right. I'll second it.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Mayor Cato.
Aye.
Richard Cassidy.
You're up, Don.
We skipped number five.
No. Oh, sorry about that. Where is number five? Am I bad? Is it here? Yeah, I see it. Oh. Probably a type 2 action.
It's actually a type 2 action anyway, for replacement of a structure, you know, kind, you're just replacing the sidewalk in the same place where the sidewalk is, right there. So it's a type 2 action, so I'm not exactly sure.
So it's designated as a type 2.
I'm not exactly sure what they mean by seeker designation for Kittleberger Park Sidewalk Replacement Project, but.
Just say it's a type 2.
It's by definition type 2, so there's, there's no significant impact and no seeker demand is required, you don't have to take a revision.
It was, that was actually completed in February. It's part of the package, that went in the whole project package, so that was completed in February. I didn't see that on, I didn't notice it on the agenda, so that's, yeah, that's squared away.
All right. Now you're up, Don.
Don, you're up.
I have nothing. Sergeant Schultz would say.
Nothing, hot dang. I know nothing.
Jeez, Hogan's Harrows, oil spring back, Thomas. Those were the days. I never heard of that.
All right. We have the comp and overtime report for November.
The only thing I would have to add is that Megan's overtime has been out there.
How much overtime does Megan have?
Eight hours.
Okay. That was for?
As a result of Halloween and Veterans Day.
Okay. Anybody else? Carol? All right. So next, we have budget modifications. Christina, you want to review those?
Yep. The first one is for transfer to cover the cell tower construction, allow for construction of the cell tower, total of all revenues of general fund recognized or reasonably expected to be recognized in the current fiscal year, including unappropriated unreserved fund balance exceeds the total of all revenues of the general fund as estimated in the budget, including appropriated fund balance, taking from fund balance $150,000 and transferring to cell tower construction. And the second is to pay for the Xerox claim in judgment, to pay for the judgment signed on November 9th, 2016, by the Honorable Judge John J. Ark in settlement of the Xerox lawsuit. Total of all revenues of general fund recognized or reasonably expected to be recognized in the current fiscal year, including unappropriated unreserved fund balance exceeds the total of all revenues of the general fund as estimated in the budget, including appropriated fund balance, in the amount of $35,469.49. From fund balance to transfer to the expense line judgments and claims to the Xerox in 2016.
What is it? That check has to be cut within 60 days after the break.
Forty-five.
Four, it's forty-five?
Okay.
Okay. Would have any questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, to approve the transfers, budget modifications.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trusty Eftalo.
Aye.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Mayor Cato.
Aye.
Motion's up.
Jake? How we doing with the vehicles?
Two out of three, Ben.
There you go. So what's up with the latest with number three?
W3, I talked to him yesterday, and back when they called the, this afternoon, again to the dealer, they're waiting the hydraulic pump, it's not there yet, and they should expect it, he said he expects that we should have it next week. So, it's all done, it's waiting for a pump to go in, bolt it up, and there you go, so that's, that's their story, so.
All right. What are we doing this weekend, are we okay?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we still have two plow trucks, we only have a regular plow truck, which is what we typically do when we're on, we did get that other salter, there's a backup salter, so we're gonna be able to utilize that. We should be, we should be taken care of, and if the weather keep, the reports keep changing, getting less and less, we'll be getting better and better today, so.
I assume you're definitely done with the lead pickup?
Today, yeah, today they, they went around and finished it, did the streets look great, the guys have been.
They did a phenomenal job.
Around the block, trying to make sure we get them up before, before the weather comes in, and, you know, so lead pickup, rush pickup, we're done, you know, completed today, too. They're, they just have been doing a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
How'd you make out with the electrician on the light bulbs? Wonderful. They were all on for the.
They were.
For the white lights.
So wasn't nothing big?
No, some of them were actually cords, and the plugs here, they're weird setup, and we've got to get some new cords when we get the new vice.
Electrician at the town.
Yeah, they, I think there was a couple outlets and one sensor, but there were some other issues with the wiring, I think, and a couple, so.
Nice.
We got them all up as soon as the electrician left. That night, I drove through the village and three different ones were out.
Yeah.
So we, we swapped those.
Should order new ones. Because Carl.
Yeah, gee, I love that.
Unplug them.
Yeah, but, no, I was so curious, the guys, the last few weeks, they sure have been working hard, you know, that stuff together for like six months.
It does look nice, I gotta admit.
Yeah.
With the tree, the lights they put in the different trees, going down Main Street, it does look.
Oh, just Fritz's tree, his Christmas tree, and the founder culture looks so great.
Yeah. I like white lights, they did like that, but.
Yeah.
Can't wait. I've already tried to embarrass me once. I know. I'm sorry I made you feel bad. We're so friends.
Is that it, Jake?
That's it.
Oh, my goodness sake. I shouldn't have asked, you know, to get myself out, however, but we didn't.
You guys are lucky, I have a headache.
We appreciate that.
All right. The next Village Board Meeting will be the 20th. All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, to approve the minutes of November 22nd.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All right. Next, we have the Village Board Meeting Minutes for November 22nd. Questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion, second, to approve the minutes of November 22nd. Questions? All right. Next, we have the Village Board Meeting Minutes for November 22nd. Questions?
I won't be here. My son.
Trusty Duncan.
Aye.
Trusty Byer.
Aye.
Trusty Lansing.
Aye.
Mayor Cato.
Aye.
Motion's up.
Jake? How we doing with the vehicles?
Two out of three, Ben.
There you go. So what's up with the latest with number three?
W3, I talked to him yesterday, and back when they called the, this afternoon, again to the dealer, they're waiting the hydraulic pump, it's not there yet, and they should expect it, he said he expects that we should have it next week. So, it's all done, it's waiting for a pump to go in, bolt it up, and there you go, so that's, that's their story, so.
All right. What are we doing this weekend, are we okay?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we still have two plow trucks, we only have a regular plow truck, which is what we typically do when we're on, we did get that other salter, there's a backup salter, so we're gonna be able to utilize that. We should be, we should be taken care of, and if the weather keep, the reports keep changing, getting less and less, we'll be getting better and better today, so.
I assume you're definitely done with the lead pickup?
Today, yeah, today they, they went around and finished it, did the streets look great, the guys have been.
They did a phenomenal job.
Around the block, trying to make sure we get them up before, before the weather comes in, and, you know, so lead pickup, rush pickup, we're done, you know, completed today, too. They're, they just have been doing a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
How'd you make out with the electrician on the light bulbs? Wonderful. They were all on for the.
They were.
For the white lights.
So wasn't nothing big?
No, some of them were actually cords, and the plugs here, they're weird setup, and we've got to get some new cords when we get the new vice.
Electrician at the town.
Yeah, they, I think there was a couple outlets and one sensor, but there were some other issues with the wiring, I think, and a couple, so.
Nice.
We got them all up as soon as the electrician left. That night, I drove through the village and three different ones were out.
Yeah.
So we, we swapped those.
Should order new ones. Because Carl.
Yeah, gee, I love that.
Unplug them.
Yeah, but, no, I was so curious, the guys, the last few weeks, they sure have been working hard, you know, that stuff together for like six months.
It does look nice, I gotta admit.
Yeah.
With the tree, the lights they put in the different trees, going down Main Street, it does look.
Oh, just Fritz's tree, his Christmas tree, and the founder culture looks so great.
Yeah. I like white lights, they did like that, but.
Why is the meeting on a Tuesday instead of a Thursday?
It's scheduled for the 20th.
That's what I thought.
On the schedule that we have.
Can we pull it up on the website?
The website says the 20th.
It does?
It does, but I don't know why...
I don't know why it's there.
Why in the organizational meeting you decided to change it, like, the 20th, so what, the 22nd? It's not Christmas, it's not Christmas Eve, it's not...
I don't...
But for some reason you changed it to the 20th.
It's because Christmas is on a Sunday.
So?
Because normally the board would change it to a Tuesday to accommodate Christmas being towards the end of the week. But in this case, it's the next week, so it doesn't, it's not, it's not relevant.
Right. So I have no idea.
So just make a motion to change it to the 22nd.
Yeah. Oh, I won't be here anyway, so I...
Doesn't matter for you either way.
You're not here the 20th or the 22nd.
I'll be in Oregon.
So you'll definitely vote for...
Yeah, whatever you want.
Who else is not here?
Al.
Are you gonna be here? The 22nd, I'll be here.
Yeah.
If we have the 22nd.
But the 20th, you wouldn't be?
No, I gotta go pick up my stuff.
Do you want to move it to the 22nd?
Why, certainly.
Awesome.
You have a meeting on the 20th or the 22nd? All right. I'll move it to the 22nd then. I'll entertain a motion of the second to move the 20th, uh, the village board meeting from December 20th to Thursday, the 22nd.
Of December.
Of December, shit. 2016, very good motion.
Yeah, well, yeah, I definitely won't be here, so as long as it's for you, you're gonna be here, it's fine.
We have a second?
I'm not here.
You want a second at that? We have a motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it. I mean, I'll be here, but I'll second it.
Okay, what was that?
Trustee Duncan.
Aye.
Trustee Abolito.
Aye.
Trustee Byer.
Aye.
Trustee Lancey. Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Everybody goes out the day before Christmas Eve, huh? And I'll see you, I'll dawn, so, come on, the night of Christmas Eve.
The 23rd?
He wears a Santa hat.
That's right.
At the coach, or no, at, at Hatters.
But Hatters not there anymore.
I know. Where's your place?
Kitty wants to get the...
Where's your new place? Yeah.
I'll find him.
All right.
Kitty doesn't want you to fight him.
I'll entertain a motion of...
I think we needed to continue the discussion with Don here for the, from the last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Jake, when you say quick, it really does scare me.
It does, yes, it should.
All right, I'll entertain a motion of the second to an executive session to discuss the union contract.
Good night.
Night, Chris, thank you.
Come take the motion.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Lancey.
Aye.
Trustee Duncan.
Aye.
Trustee Abolito.
Aye.
Did you say nay? I'm good.
Aye.
I say aye.
Aye. Doesn't matter anyways.
Yeah, the 22nd, everybody gets one, regardless of whether they're here. Educated as to what the situation is. Look at you, you're gonna be a twit.
They probably then have to be notified with a page on the arguing page.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I sent an email, I'll, just let me ask this question. I sent an email out asking everybody if you'd rather do it informally in the next workshop or just want to keep it on that, and I haven't had my phone, I didn't get an email on my phone, yeah.
Well, I have a, yeah, mine's been down for like three days, so I haven't been able to look at it.
Yeah, so, we're talking about the...
I'd rather have them do it at a workshop.
So would I.
Yeah.
That's why I asked that question.
That's what Alice was saying.
That's why I sent an email asking the question.
We got an answer all the way around.
Which way?
Watcha.
Watcha?
Pay attention.
What? I didn't hear you guys are talking again.
Yeah, I know. We're gonna be somewhere here, we're not gonna...
All right.
And so why, why do you want it at a workshop?
It's just, it's less formal.
So what?
So he can, he can have his coffee, pretzel rods, and...
Come in with my camera on.
It doesn't... In my way of thinking, you should do it at a regular board meeting, because then it's, it's on a published agenda that people actually look at, and maybe some of the public may want to come in. It's not a public hearing, but...
Why you gotta bring us...
And I don't know... You can still have a meeting anyways, right? You gotta have a public hearing here.
Right, in a, in a meeting.
Tom, you already had your time, you took it.
Well, you're gonna, again, and you're gonna, I don't know what their timeframe is, but if you wait till... So you're gonna have it at a workshop on January, whatever the heck it is, and then just gotta go to the next town board, the next village board meeting to set a date for a public hearing, which has to be, you know, a month later.
He wants to see it.
You're basically pushing them back like another month or so.
Yeah, that's a good point. He wants to move this forward. He wants to move forward, because he's been at this, I guess.
And like I said, you can, you can have as much back and forth as you wanted, like, the meeting tonight, dude.
All right.
So other than having like a raw table in a, you know, right in front of you, what, as a practical matter, what's the real difference between a workshop meeting and the meeting we had tonight?
Don, it's so...
It's so, we'll just go backwards then, right? Sometimes less is more, sir. So is that? 22nd? That's what, we're not gonna do it, we're gonna do it at 22nd rather than the...
Rather than the 20th.
Go ahead.
Right.
Yeah, we're not gonna go to a workshop.
I understand.
Okay, good. Thanks, thank you very much.
And, and, other than, you know, well, I'm just saying, unless, unless three of you are like adamantly against it, even go into a public hearing, the only thing that's gonna happen is they'll, they'll present the thing, you ask whatever questions you want, and we'll set it down to get public input, set it down for a public hearing.
No, 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 you get it, you get it.
What you want to do.
Okay, yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Just as a back, practical matter, I've gone to one of those other developments out in Greece, and it, very, very nice. I was very impressed.
Yeah, I think in part of your package, there's photographs of the one in Shiloh, or now, pretty much.
That's what I'm talking about.
Identical to what he's proposing here.
Yeah. I was impressed. So make sure, gentlemen, ladies, please review the packet in advance of the meeting, take the time, support. I'm asking, I'm saying, I said please. I'm enhancing the stage, it's a very sporting facility, also, uh, trustee Abolito.
Here we go now, we got all this done.
That's what we do.